All right, so we are gonna call this meeting to order. We have the three of us, Julie and Lance Reynolds. From the Republican American. Thanks Lance. All right, so we have the approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 4th, 2021 minutes.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table the tax collectors' report. I didn't see it, so maybe, maybe there isn't one, but I didn't see it. So I'll make a motion to table that.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, communications from the public. And I wanted to start the meeting with like a moment of silence for Pete Rossetler, who passed away the other day unexpectedly. And he has served this town for numerous, numerous number of years on our department. He's really been the ultimate volunteer, always smiling, ready to help anybody. He'd give the shirt off his back. He's really going to be missed. And we'll do something when I, like I said, I can't even remember how many years he's been in, but it's been a long, long time, so.
Yeah, he's a great man. He's a great man, absolutely. The Rossetlers are a part of this town. But this town's all.
Many years, many, many, many years, yeah.
Yep, what this sounds, it's why it's a great town. So I guess you, moment of silence Barbara?
Yeah, that's what I said.
I didn't mean to.
No, 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 that's quite all right. Okay, thank you. So we have commissions and boards, appointments. So the first one is the Council on Aging. This was to replace Bob Bur- not Bob Burman. Mr. Bur- Burman, who moved out of town. Rich Burman, oh my God. And they haven't really met, and so there isn't anybody that we have. So I'll make a motion to table the Council on Aging.
Again.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have the Inland Wetlands Commission. We have a vacancy expiring 8/31/22. That was from Drew Wood, who resigned. I don't know, Russ, you had asked him if he would come back.
Yeah, and unfortunately, he says he's way too busy. He's a great, great person to have on the commission. The commission really liked Drew a lot. I really like Drew a lot. Anybody who knows Drew likes Drew a lot, so.
Yep.
Unfortunately, I get it. I hear where he's coming from. So, um, so he resigned and I asked two, two young women to join our commission.
Okay, but we need one name right now.
Well, that one, I think would be.
You have, you have two openings. You have two vacancies. One was vacated by Drew Wood that expires in '22. And one, one that was vacated by Richard Strax, and that is until '23.
Yeah, I think you should put Sierra up first to replace Drew.
Sierra Gorgliano.
Thanks. I never knew how to, they've been my neighbors for years, and I never knew how to say their name. I asked my son, he said, I don't know their last name, so, but yeah, Sierra is, be great.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Sierra Gorgliano to the vacancy expiring 2022 to replace Drew Wood.
I will second that.
I will abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second one is vacancy to replace Richard Strax.
I'm really excited about Olivia Cody, because she's, she's in engineering. That's her major at Central Connecticut, and I've met with her a couple of times. If we all remember, Olivia came to us for the farmer's market for her Shepog. What do they call it? The Shepog?
Senior project.
Right, and aspire then. I'm impressed by her now. I know her dad is the wetland enforcement officer. I don't see any conflict of interest there, and I totally support a young person, 21 years old, woman coming on, love it. Hopefully she'll stay on.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Olivia Cody to the vacancy expiring '23.
I will second that.
I will abstain.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Just to say now, the wetland commission is four men and four women.
Good. Good for you.
First time in history.
That's great. It is.
It is great, and they're young, so it's great.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, they got a good teacher there.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate that.
So we have a, the next one is a vacancy on ZBA. Mr. Lewis, who sold his house and moved out of town. He was sorry to get off, but so I would like to make a motion to move Nancy Schoenholz, who is an alternate, up to the regular position.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we have Nancy Schoenholz's position, ZBA alternate, and that vacancy expires in '24. I don't really have anyone at the moment, so, well, we can put that out for people.
I'll make a motion to table that.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, conservation. Actually got three resignations. And one is from Trudy. She was resigning from the Conservation Commission effective immediately. And so she said, it's, it's time for the commission to tap into new membership and energy. And as you know, I'll be moving once the threat of the virus subsides and the borders open. Because they are moving to France. So we had already moved her from a regular member to an alternate member. And then the chairmanship changed, and they, they did a little shuffle there, and she said, you know what? Because they're going to start on some projects, she doesn't want to start and then leave, because they actually are hoping to, hoping to move to France during the month of February. So that's Trudy. Ron Fawness, who is the chairman, resigned. And another alternate, Linda Guerra, who we just appointed. But, and I didn't see her letter, but I heard that she did send it. She didn't copy me on it. But she was going to be starting school and some other things, and has decided to step off of conservation.
Why did Ron, why did Ron step out?
You know what, he I, I, you know what, I feel badly because he did send a letter. I don't have it here.
That, that's okay. I was wondering if he was upset about something or just.
Well, I mean, you know, the leadership changed. He'd been at, actually, you know, it was what Gary Steiman was the original chairman, and then Gary wanted to step down. And so Ron Fawness said he would co-chair. He didn't want to be the chairman. And so they were co-chairmen when Gary passed away. And he picked up the ball and ran with it, and they, they went into a lot of different things. And members changed, and they, they, they had a lot on their plate. And Ron was very, very excited about it, but it's just.
Do we have replacements?
No, I don't have any right now.
So I'm wondering whether we should consider, a lot of towns have, and I see on the agenda that we're going to talk about making planting and zoning one commission. Should we make inland, wetlands, and conservation one commission? A lot of towns do that.
Yeah, they do. They absolutely do.
I mean.
I mean, you know, you would have a lot to say about that, so, I mean.
I have no, I have no problem with it, as long as the Conservation Commission doesn't have a problem with it. But we've already put on a couple of new members, so we're full. You know, it kind of throws them all out. I, I guess we need to think about this.
Well, no, because, yep, go ahead, Jim.
Has Conservation been working on anything actively involved in a project?
Well, they are, they have a couple of things that they're looking to get into. Number one, they wanted to get back into working on the natural resources law that was started years ago and trying to keep that up, which kind of went by the wayside. And then they are also, they're working with the land trust and the library, getting the town into the pollinator pathway. They, they work with the library for, you know, a town wants to know. Ron had some things that were regarding vaccinations, regarding climate change, and, you know, I think that maybe they're still going to be working on those. But the big project that they had really was Joey's Trail, and that's completed. And it's, you know, it's, it's really awesome, and the library has done some programs there. So I
Why don't we?
Why don't we open up, why don't we open up a discussion with them on that?
Okay, so we, I'll make a motion to table these three vacancies for the Conservation Commission, and we'll have a discussion about joining with wetlands, and how we could get people who are interested on the commission on wetlands. I don't know if we could expand the wetland commission, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm sure by ordinance, you could do that.
Yeah, you could add two more.
But I mean, that's where the research comes in, and Lorenzo Gaudioso is the new chairman. Aaron Josephson is, was going to be the new secretary. So we have Tony Benevigna. So maybe we just have a conversation with them, open that up. Maybe we'll have a Zoom meeting one, one day. All right. So all in favor, I mean, second, and all in favor of tabling these three?
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye, and that we will open up a discussion as far as combining. Okay, I mean, we'll see. All right, desegregate Connecticut. Russ, last month you said you'd like to have that on the agenda. It is an up and coming topic. You know, it's going to, it's absolutely being discussed in the legislature. And they, you know, they had a study. I sent you some information on it. You know, the towns are violating rulings on exclusionary zoning.
Exclusionary.
Yep, so.
I thought it, zoning is for anybody. I don't see anything in any zoning regulations that keep people out. I'm perplexed.
Nope.
I mean, I'm reading this, and it looks like desecrate Connecticut. And I find it very, I find it very racist to, to indicate that Connecticut is segregated because we, the people of Roxbury want it that way. And here's the fact, we're the least segregated state around all our neighbors. That's a fact. And I, I agree with some of what they're saying. I don't agree with how they're going about it. It's, it's very divisive. It's indicating that small towns that have a majority of white people live in them are racist. We, we don't want people of color here. We don't want people who don't look like us here, and, which is totally false. And the state of Connecticut doesn't have its own house in order. It doesn't have a budget in order. It's been messed up for decades. And they're going to tell us towns how we should zone to keep our town what it is? Let's not forget, ladies and gentlemen, that Roxbury depends on weekenders for our economy. Whether you like it or not, that's what our economy is. And we depend on people, anybody can move here, who wants to move here. You want to work hard like I did, work three jobs when you're in college to get to Roxbury? You know, I, I don't know. I don't see anything in our zoning that's exclusionary. I think that's wrong. It's wrong to, to have this conversation this way. I, I did look at all this stuff, and, and I'm calm now. Why am I calm? Our land in Roxbury does not lend itself to massive development. It doesn't lend itself to condos, townhouses. I, I mean, I can't speak to a certain application, because it's before the wetland commission. But I could speak to that land is very hard here. A lot of wetlands, a lot of ledge, a lot of rock. It's amazing what people have to go through to meet the drainage calculations that the state of Connecticut has set forward. I'm not worried about Roxbury. I'm not opposed to condos. I'm not opposed to townhouses in the right place, as long as we don't destroy the environment doing it. And I have, my hat is off the Jim Conway and the zoning commission, because you didn't need the state to tell you to loosen up your zoning. You listen to the people, and that's what the planet development is all about. And your commission deserves a big pat on the back, because you listen to the people in this town. And you, you've changed zoning to make it easier, so we could have more rentals. We could do things to have second buildings on our lots, but still protect who we are. So leave us alone, state of Connecticut. You want to desegregate? Then take a look at the cities and do something about the cities. Who wants to live in a city that where there's killings every night? I mean, it's, it's, it's sad what goes on in our cities, because they are not governed properly. They want to defund the police, and why? I, I don't know. But I, I lived in New Haven for a lot of years. I had my motorcycle stolen. I had my apartment broken into. I didn't move here to get away from that. I moved here because I love the woods. I wanted a land where I could have goats and chickens and dogs and cats. Am I wrong for that? Have I done that because I want to deseg, I want to segregate Connecticut? Not at all. I worked hard to get to this place. I would like a house in the Hamptons. I really would. Can I have a house in the Hamptons? No, I can't. Why? I don't have the money to have a house in the Hamptons. I don't blame anybody for that. It's the way it is. But we need to have a better discussion about this. It's a good discussion. I'm not saying it's a bad discussion, or they're crazy. They're not. It's a good discussion. But let's get the facts out there where they are. Let's talk the facts. I'm afraid about my freedom of speech. I can't say what I think anymore. I'd be, you know, I could lose my job for crying out loud. So, but I, I, I agree with some of what they want to do. I totally disagree with how they've labeled it. Like, we're all racist here, and Connecticut has become desegregated because of what small town state or what anybody did? And, and we're the least segregated state around? I mean, let's get it together. But I do blame the people of Connecticut, because you voted, and we have a major Democratic majority on both sides. We're, we're not a Democratic state. We're, we're, we are in a monopoly, a monarchy. And you keep voting for the same people who keep raising our taxes, and you deserve everything they're throwing at you now. You do. Now, now, hold on, Jim. If Republicans were, were a total majority, I'd be totally opposed to it. I'm totally opposed to it. There needs to be discussion. There needs to be democracy. We can't be just pushing this silly stuff through, because it's politically correct. It's wrong. We're going to ruin this state. This state has gained a population, a lot of people from New York, because New York is totally messed up. We should work on that, and we should talk about it. But the map that they show talks where, where the people of color are living. Do they show where the gay people are? I mean, because if they showed that, Roxbury would have a lot of dots on it. A lot of those people are my friends. A lot of those people helped me get elected in 1997. You know, so you could, you could spin this any way you can. I don't like the way they're spinning it. I like discussing it. I want to discuss it, but not the way they're saying. Connecticut is not a racist state. It's not segregated. That's all, you know, what we could do, we've allowed our, our, our smaller, our larger towns to have movie theaters, other things, and we've totally taken away from our cities doing that. We, we've allowed towns to build things that shouldn't be built, malls and stuff, unless they have sewer systems, public water supply. And we've allowed towns like Newtown, Southbury to do that. And it's bad planning by the state, not bad planning by Roxbury. Roxbury's done the right thing to be a New England town, and we're a tourist town. And if we destroy that, we destroy our economy. It's the same way of cutting out a pipeline that was permitted and killing people's jobs overnight, instead of talking about it and doing it over time. I'm sorry, that this state is not segregated. It's not. I'm not a racist, never was. I have a lot of friends of color who tell you, you're crazy. So that's my spiel.
I just wanted to say a few short words.
I do, I do want to hear from you, because you're our zoning chairman. You've done, you've done great. You've done great in what you've done after the planet development to respond to people's concerns in this town about inclusion. There is no inventory in rentals in this whole area. You can't rent. It, it's true.
No, that's.
It'd be great to, to have more affordable housing in New Milford. But we don't have the infrastructure, so don't call me a racist, because we don't have the infrastructure. That, that's what this is. So Jim, okay, I'll shut up. I think with you, I, I just, I just want to give my hats off to you and the zoning commission for responding. And the state of Connecticut makes us have a planet development every 10 years. We did that. We responded. That's not good enough? You want to take our zoning away? You're gonna run it. You're gonna run it. You can't, you can't balance a budget. You know, and you're gonna run it?
Well, simply.
I'm, I'm not for it. I'm for the discussion.
All right.
I'm not for the state taking.
But let's have a discussion.
All right.
I just want to throw in a few things. From a zoning standpoint, one size does not fit all.
Right.
We zone to the type of town we live in, the type of people that live in our town. So every town's a little bit different. So regionalized zoning just isn't going to work, because it won't fit every little town.
Thank you.
And there's so many, for desegregation, we don't have jobs here. So they're telling us to bring people into Roxbury that are going to have to commute 30 to 45 minutes to their work. People don't want to do that.
How's that work for the Green New Deal?
They don't want to commute. So they're going to live in the urban areas, because that's where their work, their jobs are.
Right, and we don't have the bus service or the trains or anything.
No.
We don't have the infrastructure at all.
Even if we allowed multifamily housing, even if we had one acre zoning and put two apartments, because everything I read, that was supposed to be so great for the environment. People aren't going to come and rent them, because there's, the jobs aren't here. And they go as close as they can get to their work. And zoning definitely is up to the people that live in that town. And we don't need people that live in other towns telling us how to utilize our land. It's a land use board. And that's what keeps Roxbury what it is.
Like, I, I agree, and I.
Totally agree.
We have to really pay attention. We have to get the people involved to, you know, watch what's going on in the legislature. You know, I just sent something, I just put it on Facebook, that they want to establish a statewide tax on real property to, you know, establish a one mil tax on commercial and residential property that anything that's valued over $300,000. Now, the, these things are going to all come in if people are, don't know about them. So the desegregate Connecticut, people do need to get on board, and just like this tax, which is crazy, to get on board and to try and understand. So we need to, you know, just get information out to people. But Jim, why don't you just quickly review some of the, some of the changes that you just did with the zoning commission?
Oh, we've been, first, we've had non-conforming structures, non-conforming barns. And when you, we did the research, we found out that this barn is perpendicular to the highway. The non-conformity was about 10 feet of an 80-foot structure. The other 70 feet is conforming, well outside of the 50-foot setback. So we changed it before, you couldn't touch any of that structure. You couldn't do anything with it, because it was, the 10 feet was non-conforming. So now you can take the 70 feet of that barn that is conforming and do as you wish. You can put an apartment in it. You can do whatever. And then we have taken the accessory apartments and accessory freestanding structures, a home, house. At one point, it had to be, it could be no more than 50% of the primary. Well, you have a primary that's 2,000 square feet. You could only build an accessory structure of 1,000, 50%. Now, we changed all that. You can build anything on your property up to 1,800 square feet. Use it for in-laws or just rent it.
Great idea. Great idea.
And the other thing is, the residents, the, the primary, the owner had to live in the primary. We took that away. You can buy a house, rent the house, the primary, build your accessory, and you can put an accessory apartment up to 400 square feet in the primary. Three rentals, three rentals on one piece of property. And it all is, it's in effect. You can do it. It's, it's passed.
Great job, Jim.
And to encourage, and to encourage more rentals, and anybody, Russ, you got a piece of property, you can put an 1,800 square foot house on it.
No matter what.
Trust me, Jim. I don't want anybody near me.
No, I've been, yes, it's, it's a lot. So if you had an old lot of two acres, yep. But most of our lots, obviously, are three to four. So there's plenty of room on most of the lots.
And I think we should go back to three acre zoning. Should I never went to four? I never saw any reason for that.
It's what we're going to do, Russ. We're in discussion right now. Zone A. We're going to go back to two acre zoning, just in the center of town, because that's what it used to be.
Great idea.
And then we have interior lots that are way too large. They're required six acres for an interior lot. We're going to bring that down to the interior, and the front lot can be the same size. Lot of stuff.
Right, so who needs the state? Already, the board of zoning, the zoning board in the town of Roxbury has done more to desegregate Connecticut and not disintegrate or disintegrate Connecticut. And, and, and using the planet development, exactly what the state told us to do.
Correct.
Who needs them? We don't need them.
Roxbury needs to be left alone, and we have good commissions, good boards, and we don't need regionalization to run our town.
That's right. And I propose that Witsfield County secede to New Hampshire. Can't go to New York.
That emotion?
Or Massachusetts, because they're even worse, but New Hampshire's looking good to me.
Oh, gosh. Well.
Well, if they keep shoving this stuff down our throats, and we can't have a discussion about it, and, and it just gets passed. and we can't have a discussion about it and and it just gets passed like this, you know, this quarter percent family leave act. I mean, it's hurting families. I I mean, for me, it's twelve hundred bucks a year that I can't give to my kid for his education. I, they keep taxing us and taxing us, and they're not doing anything to cut anything. They're adding people to government even though the population's not going up. I mean, they need to get their house in order. I I do like Governor Lamont. I do. I I, you know, I'm not a partisan. I'm a Republican, but I'm very middle of the road. And and all of us are. That's why we work in Roxbury. We don't care what party you're from. We care about our town. I wish the state and the federal government would work that way. I really do. It's very bad what's going on in this country.
Well, you have, like I said, we got to pay attention. I know John Cody's been in on some of the webinars and the workshops that because it it's it's coming out and it and it's happening. And so we just have to keep educating and and know what exactly where they are in the process.
Well, where's the valley, where's the Northwest Council of Governments on this, Barbara? What's Cost doing? Is Cost for this, against it? I mean, we give it to them how long now? And what do we get? I don't know. Every agenda they put up every year doesn't get passed. Like, I'm wondering where they're coming from. Are they buying into this?
No, they're, no, they're listening. But you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of people to please and a lot of people that are not happy. And like I said, it's still, it's just in a, in, it's a process right now. It's ongoing. And the best thing we can do is pay attention and speak up where we want to speak up.
That's right. We're a great state because of the people, all people, all colors, whatever their sexual preference or religion is. And it don't divide us. The only thing dividing our country is the press and the politicians. From what I see, the people are still hanging in there. My best friend is a Democrat. My best friend forever is a Democrat. And our and our politics will never come between us. And it's only the politicians and the press that's doing that. And it needs to stop. And it needs to start right here in Roxbury saying, I'm not for any partisans anymore. I'm not. I'm not for the people who write letters to voices still, still. I mean, Trump is gone, they're still dividing us with their letters. Just say something good or shut up. That's my ad, shut up.
Okay.
The positive, shut up.
All right. We do have a great town, I have to say.
We do. We're awesome.
So moving on, or unless, Jim, you want anything else on that?
Uh, no. We're good there. What is the process? I mean, what's the next step on this desegregation?
You know what? They keep having, you know, workshops or CCM might have something and Cost might have something there. And they're trying to see what's going on in the legislature. It's just pay attention right now is what it is and and learn what's going on. But it is about, you know, taking over zoning.
Oh, yeah.
It is. Town, towns, how they have to live, and they can't run a state.
Okay.
All of them.
All right, let's go.
Planning and zoning. Okay, I put this on.
How about Mira? How's Mira doing?
Oh, wait, I went on a lot. Okay, Mira. So I did not, I have my letter. It's right here. It it was all set to go on January twenty-second. And I held it up because I knew that the Mira Board was meeting and that they said that they were going to have a budget. I thought they were going to have it by now because when you want to opt out, it was supposed to wait to see what the opt-out rate is going to be, the tip fee. But they didn't, they didn't have their budget. They are, they're going to have it at the end of February. But I'm going to redo a couple of things in this letter, and I'm going to send it out this week if we get back in because of the snow. Because the opt-out rate was, is already higher. So they're not going to go down like by thirty-five cents to where we would reconsider staying. It's not going to be that. So if you look at what the opt-out rate is going to be, and I don't even know, I hope I'm making some sense. The intention is to opt out in March. You have, you have to opt out in March once you find out what the opt-out rate is. But I can already assume what it's going to be. And I'm going to send the letter, and I'm going to say we have every intention of opting out. We know that the rate is not going to change. It's actually probably going to go up. And so I want to know, do I have to do anything else to not miss this window of opportunity to get out?
And should we get out, Barbara? I mean, I think we evaluated this and we all decided we should. To, I I forget the name, Jen, Jen works there. What's the name?
Yes, Jennifer Heaton Jones.
Yeah. What's that company?
RRA, the Houstonic Resource Recovery.
Okay, because I knew they changed their name. So we decided we should go to there, right? Isn't that what?
Yeah.
We, okay, all right, great. I think we should stay on that track.
Because also, I I think this was last month, I think I reported on it, where we met with some people in the legislature. I actually heard I was on the news because of it. I asked the question, is the legislature going to revisit helping pay the three hundred and thirty million dollars needed to repair the Mira plant? And, you know, after sitting there waiting for somebody to speak up, and Senator Looney was there, he didn't speak up. One of, one of the senators said, no, we will not be revisiting that. So what that, what that means is they're going to let this plant go by the wayside, and they do want to spend money, I told you, on train platforms. So they're going to ship our stuff out. And how long are states going to take this? And so I think we should, I think we should jump ship.
Absolutely.
I I totally agree because we can't just keep burying this stuff in Ohio and Pennsylvania. HRRIA is a burn plant. And, you know, creating alternative energies, I mean, that's the way to go.
They seem to be better managed, too. Never liked MR, MIRA. Barbara, I went to a meeting for you, and I was not impressed, not at all. I think it's been mismanaged, and that's why we're.
Well, it was CRRA, and then it was changed to MIRA because, yeah, you know, things were taken over and changed, et cetera. And with this, with this turbine problem, you know, who, like we said, who's, who's watching the plant? That that these things have been allowed to just go to where they're irrecoverable and irreplaceable. So anyway, I will copy you on that. I have that, and I am going, going to get it out this week for sure. Now that I know exactly when their budget's coming and everything, I think we're in good standing. Okay, planning and zoning. Put this on the agenda. You know, it's funny that you brought up combining conservation, but which we did, I think, back in two thousand and six. We've, we've talked about combining planning and zoning because we were one of the few towns that have them separate. It doesn't matter, it doesn't mean that we have to be what everybody else is. But it's looking at where we are and applications that have come before these two commissions. I did speak with the planning chairman. He's not opposed to revisiting this. And, you know, thought maybe it would streamline some things for applications, communications, maybe some efficiencies. And, you know, now that the plan of development is done, and it's, you know, another ten years, this would probably be another thing where the ordinance could change with the number of people on zoning. And then when the plan of development comes, it's either a group from this planning and zoning takes over that or they form a subcommittee, whatever, that's down the road ten years. But obviously, a big part of it is zoning and the zoning chairman. It's all about just a discussion. That's it. So.
I I totally agree. We should definitely, especially it's hard to find volunteers. This should be done. If if the chairman of planning, who's done a wonderful job at planning, Peter, doesn't have an issue, I think we should combine.
Well, there's a lot more, a lot more to it, Russ.
All right. So the question I have is, does it need to be elected? And Jim, okay, you know more than I do about this, so.
I believe that it's an ordinance, the planning commission obviously is elected right now. And if we combine P and Z, it would be elected. All the other towns are elected planning and zoning. So that starts me right out in the beginning is I prefer appointing zoning because the Board of Selectment appoints people, and we have a little more control on who's sitting in that chair. Because zoning runs the town. We, zoning does, makes all the changes. And if we get, you know, I'm not saying there's people out there that wouldn't be good zoning officials, but I'd rather continue to choose who sits in those chairs instead of anybody just raising their hand saying, I want to, I'll run and get elected. And he's not a Roxbury person or she. They've lived here for, you know, six months, and pretty soon they're on zoning. And pretty soon, things will change in Roxbury.
So Jim, you you can't combine and have it appointed, is what you're saying.
That's my, right at the moment, I don't believe we can combine and have it appointed.
Make a new ordinance?
I think it's got to be, if it's a planning commission and a P and Z, I think it's, it's got to be elected. It's always in other, they're always elected, to my knowledge.
We need to look into that. I mean, it might be on the council.
I don't know.
But now the other thing, the other thing is checks and balances. Checks and balances. The planning commission does a P O C D, Plan of Conservation and Development. Okay. This past one that we just did, they raised some eyebrows with the center of town should become a commercial area. And zoning, seeing how we're separate, we said, no, that won't happen because we're not going to rezone to make the center of town commercial. And so that's the checks and balances. If we're one commission, it would just happen. I think keeping it separate is a plus for Roxbury and have more control of what really goes on due to appointments versus election. If that's different, then I stand corrected. But two commissions offer checks and balances.
Jim, Jim has sold me. I'm with him. I'm with Jim on that.
And one more thing, if it's not broke, we don't need to fix it. We're doing good. Roxbury is doing really good, both planning and zoning. We work well together when we need to be together. We we go together when we have to discuss stuff.
Okay.
I think what I would like to do is, you know, maybe we just, we have a conversation. We used to have, it's been a little bit, a little while where the chairman of land use chairman used to sit together and and talk. And maybe we should do that because of what you're asking about wetlands and conservation and then zoning and planning and myself. Maybe we we get together and just talk these out and and hear the other people who are not here, like the planning chairman and the conservation chairman.
No, I I agree. I'll discuss.
One meeting?
Talk with anybody on it. But the more people we can get involved, if we have six commissions versus three commissions, six commission has more people involved making decisions. We have a planning, we have a zoning, we have a wetlands, a conservation. There's four different commissions, five people, that's twenty people involved, thirty people involved versus just a handful running the town.
No, you're right, Jim. Totally sold me. I I vote for you.
All right, well.
No, I I totally was the other way, but you brought up so many good points. I totally agree with you. I I think the only reason why I said conservation with wetlands is if we have a problem getting people to join the Conservation Commission. If we don't, it's fine. We we have more than enough to do on wetlands.
But I'm just saying that I would like to hear the other two. I just have one meeting and decide, go from there.
Absolutely.
Going to drop this? All right, so I I will, I will set that up, actually. Okay.
All right.
Uh, grants. We need to have a public hearing, not really a public hearing. I need to notice. I'm going to get a PowerPoint from Cardinal Engineering because we're at the point I have to let people know about Davenport, even though the state is behind still on the local bridge money. But we have to meet requirements of certain things. And so I'm going to let people know that there's going to be a PowerPoint on our website. And I have to put something in the paper that to show what this project is, et cetera, in order to move forward in case the state says we've been awarded some money. Honestly, you know, they keep saying it's going to be in the middle of the month, in the middle of the month, in the, I don't know. I don't know when it's going to be, obviously. And as far as our steep grant, Jimmy, Herb has done an awful lot to get people in and costs, et cetera. But I can't do anything, move forward with any of the projects like the, the locks, et cetera, until I have this contract, and I don't have the contract from the state. So the state's holding us up on both of those, but I I think they're going to end up being positive in the long run.
But they're going to run a zoning commission. I I mean, they're backed up a deep, there's permits that were supposed to be out, they're not. Our our industries are in turmoil because they don't know what to do. And but they're going to run our, they're going to tell us how to run our town, really.
All right, COVID nineteen. Actually, the governor at his four o'clock update gave Roxbury a shout out about how far along we are in in getting the vaccines administered to our seventy-five and older group.
I told you I liked that guy.
But Roxbury.
Good job, Barbara. Good job. Good job.
That's, it's not me. I'll tell you what, the, the state is, again, it's, it's been a disaster, the VAMs and signing up, et cetera. So we've been working, trying to get people, other appointments, finding different places to go. I have to compliment Geraldine and Linda at this, at the senior center for helping our seniors get, get there. They finally gave our health district one hundred vaccines the other day, one hundred. And we, this is Newtown, Roxbury, and Bridgewater, they gave a hundred. So those were taken up. And hopefully, as I was talking with our director today, that we'll be getting a hundred every week. But right now, they're canceling appointments because they don't have enough vaccines out in other places. So it's crazy. And and the sixty-five and older crowd is saying, well, when are we coming? Well, they haven't even gotten the seventy-fives yet. So you know what? It's just a wait and see. But I will say that we've had outreach and trying to take care of our own. And everybody's chipped in and and like Geraldine, Linda, myself, really trying, Judy, trying to get people who want it, get, get them in there. So we'll just keep doing what we're doing.
Right, we're doing a great job.
If we do get, if we do get the hundred vaccines, again, we're looking to hopefully have a vaccine at the, at the senior center so that we could keep some people in town.
And I want to give a big shout out to Superintendent Bennett, who's done a remarkable job keeping our schools open. I mean, I'm exhausted for her. I mean, it's constant. And it's unfortunate that some people don't see that this is serious. Can't be having parties. Yeah, I I mean, the whole school shut down. I heard because somebody had a party and whatever. Um, I, I heard cuz somebody had a party and whatever. But, um, good job to Superintendent Bennett.
Yeah, she is. She's doing a great job.
Doing a great job. I, I could tell you firsthand, my son, when he was, uh, doing, uh, homeschooling, didn't do very well and I forced him to go back and it, his grades went right back to where they used to be. So live schooling is important, I think.
Well, they're off for a couple of weeks right now, but, uh, they'll be back, I'm sure. I mean, the.
Okay, they would have been off three days this week anyway.
Yeah. All right. So we're moving into the budget. Uh, you know, Kim Barron is doing her thing. We're talk, we've talked about, um, our capital projects. We're talking about a lot of other things. And so you know, I, I'll throw some dates out to you guys and, you know, we, we can meet and, and have some budget workshops if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Towards the end of, uh, February.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Have a wetland meeting the fourth Tuesday and a public hearing this Thursday.
I know. Okay.
I mean, I, I used to enjoy coming early in the morning, having coffee with you two to, but I guess that's not gonna happen.
I'm good with it.
And I'm okay with mornings too via Zoom.
We could certainly do something, uh, you know, it's a big room, separate. So, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I'd love to get together. I mean, if you two don't have a problem, I'll wear a mask.
We'll set that up.
All right.
All right. Uh, I've sent you the fire marshal's report. It's all right.
Not just pushed every, pushed every button I could find, so.
Fire alarm's probably going off.
So anyway, you have that to read, uh, and then I, I didn't get the resident trooper. I know there's been a lot of stuff going on for him. So, uh, and he's new and it, you know, it's already the, the first day of April. So it, uh, he's forgiven. And, uh, I did send you a letter that came from the fire chief.
That was a great letter.
abilities, et cetera.
It's nice to know that they appreciate, um, you know, these things that we give them. And they, they don't just expect it. They're true volunteers. That's what a volunteer is all about.
Yep.
I like that letter.
And I could tell you, you know, they, they've been pushed, uh, there's, um, it seems like an, uh, more lost people in Mine Hill lately. And, uh, you know, a lot of false alarms and accidents, et cetera. So they've been running a lot and the ambulance also for, and during COVID, it's been, uh, extra tough, extra tough. Police are doing an awesome job also. So other than that, uh, I don't know. Anybody have anything?
Yep, I got one thing.
Okay.
Um, back to my trees. I know that, um, uh, Eversource in Lewis has a long list of trees that are coming down, which is great. Coming down South Street, all those tall white pines that have outlived their usefulness. Obviously, it, it's on town property, but it's not a town tree. Cause the property owner planted them years ago.
They're actually not on town property. If you. I had Butch go, but anyway, they're tagged and Eversource is taking those.
All of those because anytime the wind blows, that's where we lose our power on South Street.
Yep.
They're old.
Those tall, tall, tall pines.
Yes.
Down on Falls Road, um, that tree's still hanging.
Where?
Well, uh, Bill Horgan.
Yep.
We did a house there.
Yep.
Go down and it's, it's all alone on the right.
Yep.
And then next house is Charlie, uh, Charlie Jackson's new house. There's a tree, it's ready to take it all down.
Really?
Yep.
Well, okay. I, uh, that, that, I thought that was gone. I haven't.
It might be. I haven't been down there. And don't forget our mirror, our mirror up on a upper counter. The mirror, Barbara.
Oh, I know. Geez.
Back down.
I know. I, okay. I, I wrote that, I wrote that the last time and you know what, stuff. It's like on that candy conveyor belt on Lucille Ball. It just keeps coming stuff, so.
But, but you got a list and then it says what Russ wants. And that gets pushed to the bottom.
But anyway, get back to Eversource. They are, they have been taking trees. Those are marked. They all have little pink, uh, ribbons on them. They actually are the homeowners, uh, because Butch found the, um, cement, whatever.
And, uh. Survey markers. Yep.
Yeah.
And, uh, they are behind it. So, so, uh, but anyway, they are gonna take them.
Yeah, they're a mess.
One of those on the side almost hit that house. So they do need to come down. They're just really shallow rooted too.
Yep.
All right, I, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Well, oh, one other thing. Just wanna let you all know, I'm gonna run again. I hope, Jim, I hope you run again. And Barbara, I hope you run again. We're a good team.
Yes, we are.
Just, you know, the Republican Town Committee called me. I don't know why, but, um, cuz they never called me in twenty four years. But, uh, I'm gonna run again. I love this board and I'll run as, as long as the town will have, will have me. And I have people like you two to work with. Love you.
I'm with you.
Yep, that's nice.
With you.
I will, I will see.
All right. So I make a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Stay warm.
Good night, guys.
Stay well. All right. Take care. Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. Good night.
Night.